Come on. All right. Tell me some.
Order. Let's see, can we do a roll call? Just when you don't want.
Keep the camera.
Yeah. Here. 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 Here.
Here. Here.
Present. So I guess you all are guests, so we're not. There in a roll call for you all. Let's see, we need to review and adopt the. Review and adopt meeting agenda and then and then minutes, so. The one revision I have.
They need open their meetings.
Oh. Is that what that is?
Yeah, they need to open their meetings.
I didn't hear you talking.
They need open their.
I got it.
Okay. And then you can get started.
Terrific. So it's all you.
All right, I call the planning commission portion of this meeting to order.
Yeah.
Here.
Yeah.
Here.
Here.
Okay, it's back to me, I appreciate the. The direction, need all the help I can get. All right, so we need to review and adopt the meeting agenda. The one revision I have is that Kyle Talente has had a family emergency. And is going to be joining us by video. He's. He's got a flight booked at ten thirty tonight, so we need a minute for that. Let's see. All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes? Okay, let's, we need to approve the minutes. We've got August seventeen and September fourteen. In terms of August seventeen, there any comments, revisions? How about September fourteen? Okay, I need a motion.
I move to adopt August seventeen and September fourteen.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes. Let's see. Let's see, now we're. Let's see, we've got RKG, is Kyle a little thing? Kyle, you with us?
Yes, I am.
Wonderful, okay. So. Let's see, I will try to set this up. So. We've got a little bit of an audible tonight. The Kyle asked me. A question that he needed answered to complete his report. And I'm not authorized, nor do I have. The. Equipped to provide provide an answer. And so. The big picture here, I'm gonna try to try to just. In 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 broad terms, paint paint the picture here. And so Kyle called and the conundrum was this, he said. You know, virtually every. Virtually every parcel that we're going to discuss tonight, the highest and best use is residential. The highest and best use, and that's. Pretty much proved out by where the demand is, right? And so we we talk about. Having having challenges getting. Businesses approved, well, so it's the it's the same approval. It's the same process to get residential approved, so there's enough demand that it's overriding any. Any issues we have, right, so. And and we we talk about. You know, heavy manufacturing needs infrastructure, needs utilities, needs roads. And and infrastructure will likely put more pressure on residential. Then residential without an offset. Into an offsetting income source leads to higher real estate taxes. And. Without. Without that offset. It affects marketability of residential. Landowners often oppose things that reduce the value of their land. But at the same time, people move here because of the rural rural nature, you know, of the county. And so the home buyers are attracted to affordability here. But at the same time, they bring children who need education, right, which increases costs, right? So there there are all these sort of juxtaposed things going on. I guess the one exception would be like to to the highest and best use of residential would be. Mining, which is basically extracting money out of the ground, that's a little bit different, right? But we talk about wanting convenience and shopping alternatives. But we we confuse our personal inconvenience with actual retail management. Right, so there are all these things that we need to reconcile. And. We need to figure out and chart. Figure out what this county wants to be and how we reconcile all these things. And I think the answer. Probably lies with everybody being a little bit unhappy, right? If everybody is giving and everybody's compromising, then then we're all a little bit unhappy. And and and. As opposed to winner takes all, which is often what what occurs. And so I guess this is an appeal. And I've got some, I I hope I'll have some help here tonight. More articulate than me. In 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 helping us move this this conversation forward in a way that's hopeful. And in a way that that as a group, right, we've got the. The. The council, the the board supervisors, we've got this group, the EDA, and we've got the planning commission. And if we do something that's disconnected from the planning commission or disconnected from the board of supervisors, then. We're, it's it's just, it's different, if we're all marching together, it it just, we're just all more likely to to have an easier road of it. And so I don't know whether this whether this the the vision is that this, you know, this this county, you know, we we want. You know, fifty thousand people here ultimately, or do we want a hundred fifty? You know, I I don't know what the answer is. But I know that if we can start to work together better than than we have in the past, right? And we're doing that right now. Then then we're all gonna benefit, and I know that everybody here, everybody who's 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 part of this. Is here because somebody thought they had something to contribute. And and. And and so I'm hoping that that, I mean, we may not even, some of us may not even like each other, I I don't know. But we all are bringing something in a different perspective, and I hope we can find some way. To to actually provide Kyle with the direction he needs to be able to tell us. How 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 we can best get where we need to go, right? And and the real issue is that we're lopsided, I mean, we've got, we've got so much pressure on residential. And and we've got some constraints that might not exist in other locales, right? And so Kyle is prepared to help answer some of those questions. I know that that like, one question that I've heard is, well, somebody else must have, you know, done this, right? And so, you know. Well, why why is, why does Tappahannock have a Walmart but we don't? I mean, there's a reason. And and Kyle, my back all the way up. When I was doing luxury residential apartments. We used to use a firm called Delta and Associates, it was run by a guy named Greg Leach. And and he ended up bringing a guy named David Wiseland, and I'm explaining this so so you understand where Kyle is coming from and his expertise. And we used to use market research, market analysis that we'd get from Delta and Associates, and Powell and Zach really don't. We used to take them into banks and finance all the, I mean, they didn't miss, right? They 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 were, they were good. Right, and 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 then and then Delta got sold to to Transwestern. And Greg and and David stayed on for a little while. But when we, when 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 we started talking about how do we fix this? My first call was was to David Wiseland, and I thought we had, right? He said, I'm slowing down, I'm retiring, you know, I'm just doing selective things, he said, I'll think about it. And then, and and talking the next morning, and he said, I'm out. And and then I said, well, we need, we need some, give us some direction. He provided me a list, and you and I worked on it, what we called, we we wore it out. Pursuing this, and Kyle is is who we settle on. Kyle has done this in other jurisdictions, he's done it all over the country. He's, he he can answer questions and he has the ability. And. I'll also go a step further and say that I've made a couple of mistakes, right? So I'm I'm that perfect. So I I thought that if I got a really smart guy and brought him in here and explained everything, the why. And and went through in detail, that. You know, people would understand. And and it was, it was a mistake, I I I lost people somewhere along the way, it was just too complicated, too too in the weeds. Right? And 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 then I then I then I also made another mistake, which was kind of looking at 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 our composition as. As a county. And and where our current synergies are, right? So your your economic tax base is ag, right? It's it's mining and and it's timber, right? And 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 then I I looked at us, all of us, I mean, I live on. Right, and and if you go through and stare at us, you you understand heavy equipment machinery, right? You live on a little, right, going down the line, right? We all have a connection to ag. And so I incorrectly assumed that that's who 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 we wanted to be. And if we want to be something else, and if we want to go get HondaJet, right? And have them look at here, we need to figure out how to talk HondaJet. Right? Right now, we can talk ag. And we 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 know that's speed, right? But we'll need to figure out what we want to be and then how we go get that, and Kyle can help us. So I. This is. I'm making an appeal that we. Come together, find some compromises for the good of this county. And it's it's worth it, right? If if we don't. If if we don't fix it, a whole bunch of residential without anything else leads to leads to much higher taxes and a train wreck for our kids. So I I don't know whether anybody says any thoughts, or, I I mean, I I now would be a good time to just. See if see if that's gelling, if it's not gelling, then we can pivot and go in a different direction, this isn't, I mean, I'm. The 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 struggle that. He asked me, Kyle asked me the question, we can't have conference calls to 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 work this stuff out without public notice. So it's just kind of fortuitous that we happen to be here together and have an opportunity to try to do something. That's. Try try to lay the ground.
Me, I think exactly right, and I think the goal is here to try to strike a balance somehow. Between the residential and the and the retail and agriculture. You know, we all want to keep this county ruled as much as possible, yet we want to have some business here. But we don't want to get overloaded with with, like you say, residential, no business, taxes the one. So. We need to work together to find that balance. That makes us all, when they all not will be happy. But the most of us should be happy. And the citizens be happy with the tax base. You're on the right track, I think.
Have we shared, Mr. Chairman, RKG's data chart on per square footage and dollars captured with the planning?
So Kyle's at a point now where he's gathered all the information. And and I don't mean to be speaking for him, he'll jump in here in a minute, but he's at a point where he's gathered the information, and we can go in any direction we want to go. I mean, if we want retail, well, then let's talk about how we get another five or ten thousand homes, right? That's what it's going to take to get retail. If, you know, if if we if we want business, well, then we need to reconcile, you know, if we're going to run water and sewer down three sixty, I mean, how do we, how do we get to a place where. There's going to be a lot of pressure to turn that land into residential, how how do we get the fortitude to say, no, we're going to wait for business? Right, it's just, there's there there's, we're really, I mean, we're at a point where we got to figure this out when we're such.
Mr. Chairman. I may think. Chairman of the planning commission, I may think that. We just completed the conference plan, I think, the next month, right? That's for the next twenty years. That looks ahead to where we're going. There are issues, yes, we don't have water and sewer. So a lot of our thoughts and development of conference of plan were trying to affect the development. When we can grow the water and sewer to make the objective sure. The planning commission is committed to working with you all. The. And yes, I. Understand, I think I partially understand what you're saying. But. In in working together, we need to recognize reality. We have had a lot of discussions in the planning commission, and we are committed to try and grow commercial and industrial development. Keep it ahead or catch up with the residential development, we recognize that, we realize that. We have had over the last twenty years, some major residential developments in this county. And they take up a lot of that land in the three sixty car. But as we look forward, we have a a map that shows the future land use. If we see good reason, we can make recommendations or we can't, well, we can make recommendations to the board to make changes in that map if that's the direction we need to go in. Right now, I think you have enough. Commercial developed garden, commercially zoned property. And once we get the. Water and sewer in. I think we can add more commercial property, commercially zoned property. Recommended commercial zones to. To meet the needs, but at the same time, we want to know what you're thinking, if you've got. Properties that you think will benefit the county to develop, then we need to know from you all what those properties are. And we can look at redeveloping those properties or rezoning those properties as as it suits the. Welfare of this county.
Mr. Chairman. Put things in perspective, within the comp plan, the way it's drawn. We're talking about less than a dozen piece of property that would be suitable for a major subdivision or any type of major development. So the county has to decide. And and I think Kyle indicated, in order to get services that people keep talking about, for instance, a drugstore, he indicated we we need another two thousand houses, correct? Or is it people?
It's it's at least two thousand households, not people, households.
So so Kyle indicated for us to be suitable for CVS or pharmacy, which everybody keeps indicating, that's the the reoccurring theme that I keep hearing. So to bring two thousand houses here to get a CVS, that that just doesn't seem to really make good sense to me. And it goes back to what you were just saying, people confuse their own needs and and the bottom line, and I like to put stuff in layman's terms, do you do you want to deal with two thousand houses? Or do you want to drive twenty minutes to Mechanicsville to pick up your prescription? It's a tough choice, it's not my choice to make, but that's really the kind of choice it boils down to. Now, within the comp plan, one of the questions that I would have for Kyle, and and after I'm done, we can jump into that. Has Kyle ever seen any rural counties like ours? Where the county would buy up some of this property and control the narrative, control what they would like to see and how they would like to see it and when they would like to see it? One of the things I know, Kennington subdivision. A large portion of that's fifty-five and older, fifty-five and older do not send kids to school. But they would give you the rooftops you need to attract to the commercial, if that's what you so desire. We have to make that decision as a county, if that's what we desire. You know, and that that's a much bigger conversation, and Kyle really can't add anything to this conversation until we tell Kyle which direction we want to go. But we can as a planning commission. We can plan, which gives you guys the the property that you need to try to find a a warm body for that seed. What what we want, what we do not want. You know, we've we've got some apartment buildings here in the county. Do we want more apartment buildings, or do we want to design air zoning ordinance to limit more apartment buildings? And I had a conversation today, and I'm gonna defer to you, Sean, and get what you found out about the apartment buildings.
Well, there was a big zoning case in Hanover last two years ago, it was a piecework by Kroger, and Sheriff Hunt stopped it on just the transient population. And the crime and the statistics on withdrawal and everything that comes with it. And that is. Just one of the things that he was, I was at that planning commission meeting in Hanover when they killed that project.
So if if we, if if we had a a group that wanted to come in here and and drop five or six hundred houses on the county, how would we benefit from that? I I don't see how we would benefit from that, I mean, we're going to have more strain on the schools, we're going to have more strain on police, fire services and whatnot. That cat is already out the bag. But for future development, we have to sit down and decide, do we want more of that, or do we want to restrict that? And how do we restrict that? And again, I I want to keep things in perspective, there's not hundreds and thousands of properties out there, there's less than a dozen. Properties within the comp plan that are suitable for a major subdivision or a major development. So if we look at those dozen properties and decide as a group which direction we'd like to see them go. And I even, and and again, I talked to Sean about this today, some of these properties, and and I'll throw this on, you guys just think about. If if we went out here and paid a million dollars for a piece of property and the county controlled it. At the end of the day, you're money ahead versus developer coming in, developing it and putting that strain on your county. And at that point, we control the narrative, we decide, okay, we bought this piece of property, we're going to chop off seven or eight commercial lots along the highway, we're going to sell them, we're going to recoup our investment. And then when we get a developer that comes in that wants to do maybe a fifty-five and older or something a little more palatable for the county, then we allow it. And I, again, not not speaking for myself, I'm just saying that's the kind of, we have to have those discussions, make those decisions. And then Kyle can say, okay, if you want to get from here to there, this is how you do it. But right now, we've given Kyle a moving target.
You control your own growth.
Control your own growth.
And in fact, I've had a conversation last week with Steve Pudge about that three sixty corridor problem. I mean, the county really needs to sit down and make a hard decision. To control that growth on that three sixty corridor. You know, we may as well have some money. To control, if not, who's to say HH Hunt will move in and. Give somebody two million dollars, buy a piece of pot there and build a brick wall on a hole. Fifty-five and older community. Just today, HH Hunt is building one up to do something, so I wrote today, because right up to eighty-eight, it's beautiful. I think they they got walking trails. There's probably about a hundred homes and a swimming pool. I mean, the way they set it up was going.
But it's of no benefit to the county.
Yeah.
It doesn't affect retail. It 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 the retail, it doesn't doesn't affect the the retail.
Well, it's because I feel the retail.
In in regards to HH Hunt, I don't I don't know how many of of the people here tonight have ever gone behind the boot line or the car wash. But there's a hundred and fifty houses HH Hunt is building in there right now. Successfully selling them as fast as they can build them. HH Hunt, for the last six months, has been looking for their next piece of property in King William County to do the same thing again. The the amount of strain on the community from those hundred and fifty houses, and that's in. Central Crossing, you still have Macaulay Park, seventy-five blocks on the ground in there where you have NK Homes, Valducci and RCI dropping another seventy-five in there as we speak, selling as fast as they can build them, they're actively looking for their next target piece. So if if we want to control the growth. We can get ahead of that and try to control it. But you got to realize, according to Kyle, I'm using his his terminology, with without another two thousand houses, we're not going to get the desired goods and services.
I may disagree with a bit of Kyle on that, because I travel two thirds of the state of Virginia and look at rural counties. And I see, driving through these rural counties, they got retail, you see little Walmart, they put markets in a lot of these, you see Walgreens in every county I think I've traveled on, CVS. So this is a way to to get them to come in. How's it done out?
Kyle, can you can you speak to that?
The the comment that there are rural counties that have these services, it's absolutely true. And, you know, someone brought up in a conversation, Tappahannock, and that's a perfect example, Tappahannock's location. In a, in a, you know, kind of centrally located in a very rural portion of Virginia. It has the benefit of being on one of the bridges that crosses across crosses across the Tappahannock River, so it's a collection point. And so when businesses like Walmart or Walgreens are looking to serve a larger regional marketplace, because it's it's generally very rural. They look for those centrally located communities that aren't just serving, in this case Essex County, but it's serving a six or seven county region. From that one location. And so, yes, there are examples, not just in Virginia, but throughout the US, where there are communities that are in rural areas that have. More quote unquote more retail than their local community can support, because they are strategically located in a in a larger marketplace that needs to be served. Another example of that, I worked a few years ago in Bowling Green, Kentucky. It's on the western side of the state, it's sixty miles south of Louisville and about sixty miles north of Nashville. And that's its claim to fame, it's located right on Interstate sixty-five, and it's sixty miles from everywhere. And so it became the logical location for those large retailers to collect, because they're not just serving the folks in Bowling Green, but they're serving a thirty mile in each direction marketplace, which is what that Walmart does in Tappahannock. They're serving way beyond just Essex County. In fact, they're reaching almost up to King George in some cases, because of where Walmarts, and I I have a graphic, I don't know if I can share my screen, but I actually mapped the Walmarts in the area. Because I wanted to kind of show how that worked. Let's see if I can share my screen. I don't know if you can see my screen or not.
Yeah.
So what you're looking at here is a map of our region, and the red dots are Walmarts that are located, and I don't know if you can see my cursor, but. Right here on the river Essex County, that's the Tappahannock Walmart. Well, there's another Walmart down here in Mechanicsville, right on two ninety-five, and that that black line is three sixty. And obviously, this here is King William, and so you can see, when Walmarts look into open stores, they're trying to locate in places that strategically serve a very large market. Now, when you get here in Richmond, there are lots of Walmarts concentrated on each other, but that's because the population density there is so substantial that it justifies having those additional stores. The point of me saying this to you all is, yes, there are communities that are rural throughout Virginia that have more retail quote unquote than they can support themselves. But it's because it's a strategic, regional geographic decision, or in other words, they just happen to be lucky enough to be located in an area where transportation. transportation, it's easy to get to from a larger marketplace and it's surrounded by generally other rural communities. Unfortunately, for King William County, your proximity to Hanover, your proximity to the sixty-four corridor. We don't have that geographic spacing to be able to then serve well beyond our marketplace. We're kinda served to the north by the Tapahannock kinda that cluster that occurred. And then obviously we're served by Hanover County and and all the growth and development that has occurred as it's been radiating out of the city of Richmond. And 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 to the second point you made, it's not that there may not be a store who doesn't, who wants to be here. But when you look at the data like we did, when we look at what, how much those types of stores require in terms of total sales and how big those stores typically are. Right now in our community, we don't have the demand to to make those businesses wanna open here. I know that uh, King William's DDA in the past has pursued several different pharmacies. Or at least me has told me, maybe I'm misquoting you me for when you and I started talking almost a year ago, but pardon me?
There have been efforts to to attract the pharmacy.
Yes, and and they they look at the same information that we do. This is not some sort of magic stuff that we have. They're looking at the same kind of information, which is how much spending is going on in this community? How big is the marketplace and how well is it served, if not locally, then regionally? And you know, that's the kinda situation that we're in, you know, uh, me made this comment to me before, we're kind of like the bar of the dumbbell. You know, you have these stronger markets that are all around us or you have these regional destinations that are all around us and we're kind of in the middle. And and that's maybe the easiest way to describe the situation that we have. And if we want to be able to create our own cluster of retail activity, it's gonna mean we need to have more spending power because Walmart's already located in Tapahannock. So trying to draw people out of King and Queen County. We're trying to draw people out of Essex County is gonna be challenging. Uh, the there's a Walmart down in James City in Gloucester. So they're pulling from West Point and all those other communities down there. Obviously the 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 strength of the market in Hanover and the Richmond marketplace is drawing folks from that direction. So we're kind of a little bit on our own. It's an unfortunate situation. But all of that is to say is this is why when we talk about, well, we wanna have a pharmacy in Central Garage. Well, I also wanna remind everybody, there is a pharmacy in West Point. But which is still uh, King William County. But if we want a pharmacy in Central Garage. We're gonna have to show those retailers that we can support it just ourselves. And that's the challenge that we have is because we, you know, we did, we've seen, I think we did the the numbers. There was about a thousand housing units that were added in King William County over the past ten years, according to your property assessment information. Which is, which is great, but but these types of stores, grocery stores require you know, tens of millions of dollars of expenditures to open a new store. And that usually translates into four to six thousand new housing units uh, to be able to generate that kind of sales. And so there's, there's a math to it. I'll be happy to reshare all that information with you all, but you know, that's, that's, you know, the unfortunate kinda situation where we're at. And so um, the comments that just made, which is, look, if we want these things, we're gonna have to accommodate these other types of growth is exactly kind of where I'm stuck at. Because uh, for me to recommend to you to say, okay, an economic development goal of this community is to add more retail services, more community amenities, uh, more shopping opportunities. Then it's like, okay, we need to bring in more more households, more spending. One of the other goals is though, is to try and limit development that that only creates fiscally positive impacts to the county. And as me has said, you know, new housing units is likely going to bring more children and more children are gonna cost money to educate them. And so it's it's those bounds and that's exactly where I'm hoping some of this conversation go, which is you all can start talking and and talk about the different economic development goals and then provide us, if not this evening, in short order. What is our priorities? Because I don't wanna put in a report saying, hey, yeah, we're gonna, we should be moving towards trying to bring in another grocery store or a a pharmacy, so forth and so on. Here's what you need to do to do that. And then the community goes, oh, my God, we don't wanna do that. That's not what we envision ourselves to be when when, you know, ten, fifteen, twenty years from now. And so that's, that's what, you know, in a nutshell, I'm hoping to get out of this conversation, which is the conversation, the discussions around what, what are we willing to invest in? What aren't we willing to invest in? What do we want? What are the the things that we're willing to do to get those things? And if we can't come to an agreement where we say, look, someone made the comment earlier, is it worth taking in another two or three thousand households to be able to get a CBS or a Rite Aid or a Walgreens to to King William County? That's kind of the direction I need. Because there are strategies we can help you put in place that get you there. And there are strategies to help you push towards that fiscally positive only growth. Which unfortunately are opposed to each other. Now, me made the comment earlier, which I liked a lot, which was well, do we envision ourselves to be a community of fifty thousand people, twenty thousand people, a hundred thousand people? Because that can help us from an economic development perspective, understand what the opportunities are and then look at it from a, from a pieces of land, you know, the mention of there are about a dozen sites that are appropriate for major subdivision development. Well, maybe, you know, if we look at what build out of those sites are, maybe that's what we need to be able to get a pharmacy. And so then that's the compromise. We we allow those twelve properties to accommodate those substantial residential developments because it's gonna get us the pharmacy that we want. If the answer to that is nope, we don't want it, then we have to start talking about land use changes. So that that development doesn't happen. And so that's kind of where, that's kind of, you know, a very long winded answer to the question of what I'm hoping to gather from you all through either this conversation or as you have time to kinda think about it. You know, get back some official comment from me on behalf of the community of how you want us to proceed to help you get to where you want to go.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a couple of comments, two comments. Uh, what seems to me, you know, we're tracking residential development. We would like to track the high-end residential development. That tends, I would think, bring in little bit older people and not as many children. But you got some high-end homes that that would help the tax base. And also, uh, talking about the county buying uh, property. I mean, have we got monies to to do that? I mean, uh, is that out there? The the board of supervisors appropriate monies?
I I I'm gonna take a chance here, but I think that if 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 all of us, you know, if the board and the planning commission and the EDA had a singular vision, then I think a lot possible. If we continue to be fractured and and play for a zero-sum game.
Mr. Rhodes, if I may. And first, first of all, thank you for the uh, for the EDA's willingness to meet with us tonight. I think that um, this is gonna be very beneficial and I think it needs to be something that is done on a more regular basis, uh, for sure. I recall when we were developing the comp plan, there was a market research poll that was done by the Hill Group and they asked in that, what was the, uh, were some of the single most important issues or challenges facing uh, individuals within the county, citizens? And the the most overarching issue was taxes. So I think when we, when we go to prioritize things, I think we need and and especially given the situation we are in this county right now, where where there's such a heavy burden on the residential side, tax-wise. Um, we need to find ways and strategies of mitigating that very quickly, uh, so that we can ease that burden, um, diversify the tax base. And uh, so as we plan, we need to have that in back of our mind. What is, what is gonna be the biggest bang for our buck early on? Uh, what areas are already suitable for development or close to being suitable for development? How can we get those ready? Uh, quickly and efficiently and cost efficiently, uh, uh, for sure. Even if it takes a little bit of investment from the county. Yeah, God will, we get the the board supervisors on board with, if it, if it generates something that will will serve those purposes, those goals that we have, um. And, you know, and we get some return on that, excellent. Um, and not everything, uh, certainly the retail component, uh, yeah, you need rooftops, uh, for for a large part or or commuters coming through the county in order to serve those places. But there's plenty of industrial or heavier business, um, rated uh, entities that could come to the county that we could draw from counties around us for employees, um, that would bring the jobs here. And of course, we would bring, you know, more residential as well and that would follow and and then bring everything up at the same time. Um, so, yeah, I think that you certainly, our functions are different, but as long as we can get driving down the same road, uh, that's that obviously I think is the is the biggest goal for us.
With Mr. Wagner's comment, I agree with him to a point. Any tax I have in development has to cost all of us money. More hazardous elements, more taxes each individual has to pay. I think we need to really focus on how to get industry in here. What we can get here that can help offset, then you look for your development later. Does anything else right now, if you're going to taxes, if all your studies do that every year? Because our schools will get to a point where they do fall. Every time it's a state formula for more people, more fire rescue, more sheriff, more expense. Uh, want to add more landfill for more, uh, places for people to go to. So if we don't start looking either ahead to industrial or even some of these residential stuff that can help offset these taxes that we don't what taxes will cost us.
Mr. Ashford pointed out recently that um, some of the development that we've had in the county, we've had, uh, over the last six years, we've had a fair amount of commercial development. But what we've really had to occur in this county was an expansion of the Nestle Arena Plan. That hundred and eighty million dollar expansion is gonna help offset the disparity in taxes between residential and commercial. We we have a lot of rural property in the county. Uh, we want to citizens have said they wanted to preserve that. There are ways to preserve that and get commercial development when we start looking at farm-related development. And I'm talking about things like vineyards, uh, wineries, um. Greenhouses or large production greenhouses. There's a outfit outside of Culpeper that's, um, has a number of large greenhouses there. I've seen others riding around in rural areas. I think there's a lot of opportunity out there. If we explore the opportunities that we can develop in the rural areas. And we just had somebody come in, it was in the paper a couple of weeks ago. That's uh, raising uh, grapes of vineyard in the lower end of the county. Uh, he's thinking in terms of maybe creating a winery there. Uh, we had a, uh, somebody came in last year with, uh, raisin flowers, uh, greenhouse. Uh, that that helps add to what we get. We've talked about drugstore, grocery store. We're, we're a we're a community that's a a bedroom community is what I'm trying to say. As a bedroom community, yes, we're gonna have more people coming out here looking for a place to stay, a place to live. And they're gonna drive back to Mechanicsville or uh, Richmond or wherever. Uh, we're gonna lose that. We're gonna lose that uh, uh, income uh, in in developing com- or residential development. We need to make sure that we can bring in commercial development, buy those developers. And require that before they build so many houses, they've got to have the commercial development in place. I'm not so sure I agree with all altogether with Kyle about getting grocery stores or drugstores in here. I think that the studies done by the Hillston Group uh, shows that, yes, there is a problem to get that. But if if we get a successful grocery store in here, it's gonna pull from the food line. It's gonna pull a lot of customers from the food line. It'll also, uh, if we get a decent grocery store, it's also gonna help. And some people out there might be complaining about me saying we don't have a good a decent grocery store, but nonetheless, I've heard that comment all too many times. But to get a competitive grocery store in here. We can pull from food line. We can, we can pull from a lot of those people that are going to Mechanicsville or wherever to shop. So there are other opportunities that pointed out uh, in the Hill Studio study that can help with some small retail and whatever, but in our development of residential development, we want to make sure that every residential developer comes that comes in here gives us commercial development to go with that residential development. And we can look at what type, but we need to look hard at uh, industrial development. Cause that's where the big money's gonna be.
Mr. Chairman. If if we follow Mr. Wagner's model, which which I don't do not disagree with. One of the biggest problems that that I've talked to a lot of y'all individually about and I called a couple of the the Hanover Planning Commission members this week and I learned they were successful at getting the Lego plant and the Whole Foods, which are huge. Now, the the reason they got those, I I would guess is because they're proximity to the interstate, something we do not have. But there's a lot of business industry, um, that that's not quite as important to. One of the main things I heard from the guys on that planning commission is when they come in, they want stuff that's ready to go right now. And if Whole Foods contacted King William tomorrow, we 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 do not have a whole lot to show them. If Lego called, we do not have a whole lot to show them. So again, just if that's the direction we wanna go in, then we not need to identify some sites, rezone them, have a process in place when they call. They're met with open arms and walk through the process and and just help facilitate the deal from beginning to end. Because if they have to jump through six months of rezoning and red tape, they're gonna look elsewhere.
I I think there's, there's something to this. And one of the things I was just highlighting, like all the, all these sort of juxtaposed positions, you know, like so heavy, heavy manufacturing needs infrastructure, utility roads, right, all that. But in this county, if we have a whole bunch of sewer, right, it's just gonna put more pressure on residential. Right? So if we're gonna plan for business and we're gonna put in the infrastructure, we're gonna need to have the fortitude to say, no, we're not resuming, right? And 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 hold that line. Or or, um, home builders wanna build where it's profitable, right? And then, um, but but if we just stay focused on on that piece, then we're gonna end up in a place where we've got higher, higher taxes. And and that's gonna impact salability of of residential house, right? I mean, nobody wants to live in a high tax bracket, you know, in the state or something. And then, and then, um, we've got landowners, right? We talk about want to reserve the rural nature. So we've got, we've we've got landowners, big landowners, right? Some of whom are like, you know, I love, I I love, I love the open space. But I wanna be able to do what I, what I wanna do with my property, right? And and don't devalue. Right? So 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 yet we love being out here in the country. And then, and then, um, uh, you know, I talked about affordability, right? We got people who who move out here because it's affordable, right? It's a value proposition. I I I mean, I I know, um, some I I mean, I know some of us who moved here, you know, I mean, I'm here because it was it was a value for what I for what I got, right? And and so even when you're talking about bigger house, it's a value proposition. And 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 so we move out here for value, but yet we put pressure on the school system when we had kids, right? So I mean, there's like all these juxtaposed things. And and I I I think we just we've got to figure out what we really want to, you know, what what are true saw.
It was chairman, if I may, I would say we look at the future land use map, which is a comp plan and keep that in mind. Because that has areas designated for commercial up and down, and that would be where you would focus your efforts if you were looking to that direction. I mean, just because it's on here, the future, that conference plan has some weight bearing, I would assume.
I mean, so we need to stick to, right? That's the part, I mean, like this, because if, you know, if I put on a residential hat and I see water and sewer right there, I probably wouldn't make it a run it seeing if they'll if they'll change the zoning, you know? We'll we'll go next season though, you know, I'll give you some some retail. Maybe I can get my houses. You know, I I don't know, I'm just saying, these are these, it's 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 not simple, it's complicated.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Again, it goes back to what I was saying, the three sixty corridor with the land use map on the the county seriously ought to take a look at making investment on buying that property because we can't control who buys. No way. If somebody comes up to anybody on that three sixty corridor and also hulks off some money, it's so.
So one of one of the properties that has been subject of focus, right? There've been two recent that I'm aware of. One is the mixed use development, six hundred fifty houses, right? That that piece, right? I think Don was right. I mean, so so like you just have to, if you oppose, you know, like we're twenty five percent finished on residential, you got to be twenty five percent finished on the commercial, right? And 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 hold it, I mean, you'll flush some stuff out. I mean, and 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 then the other the other property that we've spent some time talking about is
It's probably six to seven hundred acres on three sixty. That I would say this can be negotiated for sale. It doesn't have to be. I have a sales side of it, doesn't it? It's not the same.
So so
That way you can control your own growth, the clocks are right if you need it. You know, they're talking about they won't expand there. Well, there's several pieces of property that has more than enough area for them to extend. And you could take everything on front and three sixty corridor, that could be a commercial retail or whatever.
So this
Anybody on the planning commission agree with that or does it make any sense of it? Can it make more sense out of it? I notice there can be a huge investment, but
So so when we're talking, when we're talking about investment, right? So I've got I've got three points of reference here. The first is commercial real estate tax and what what a ten thousand square foot like dollar general for general rate, right? Just and then and then example two is a fifty thousand square foot like food line, right? And then and then I'll work it down to what what annual tax generation is on, right? So it's like two thousand bucks, you know, or forty thousand bucks. And then and then we connect that dot to the mixed use, right? So we've got two hundred thousand square feet of retail, hundred and sixty eight, hundred and sixty eight, hundred and sixty acres. We the purchase price is three point six, six hundred fifty homes. The reason that deal is getting done is because the residential raw lot cost, it's like fifty five hundred bucks a unit. They're making us, I mean, they're making their money on the residential, not on the commercial. So and and then and then if you think about the risks, right? So I've listed four of them. And and this is, we spent some time working on it, I'm sure this can get approved. That just fell out of my head this morning, I was trying to think about what to do here, right? So so there there could potentially be adverse impacts to the commercial market. And Kyle can speak to to more or less if it need be. But if we end up with two big boxes in in one food line, right, it's a race to the bottom. It's what whichever land or whichever developer is willing to lease his property for less is going to is going to get that tenant. And so we drive the 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 retail market down, right? That that it's so by overbuilding, we're we're actually punishing the retail market that we're trying to prop up, right? We need that to we we want value there. So scarcity is is somewhat important. We need to ensure that if this mixed use goes forward, we need to ensure that that two hundred thousand square feet actually gets built. Right? It the worst case scenario would be to get the the six hundred fifty homes and then we never see the retail or we're waiting thirty years for a retail. Right? And so that's, you know, that that would be a be a problem. It it ties into the offsetting the residential cost burden and and the the need to offset the educational costs. And then the other thing that we've spent a lot of time talking about is Commerce Park. I I mean, I've only got three numbers, right? But it's already ugly to me. We've got fifteen lots. We if we assume a two hundred thousand dollar purchase price, we assume that one mile of sewer is is allocated to that project. That's a million bucks. And then and then we know from some research from a more likely cost estimate that it's a million three to to finish the project up with the old plan. But the old plans no longer meet code, so they have to get updated. So if you look at, you just run through the hard costs and soft costs. We've got A and E, right? We don't know what that costs to bring plants current. We got testing, that's compaction of the roads, the road base, soil testing. We have no idea what's there. We've got legal acquisition, condo cost, sale title. I mean, there could be liens on the property, extinguishing liens. We got performance bonds, we've got B dot bonds, construction interest. And I don't know what the schedule of lot sales would be. Then we got brokerage fees, we got to pay the brokers who actually do the deal. And then we got hard costs. So we've already talked about a million, a million bucks for a mile. So we talked about the problem of cost to finish the plans. But then we've got a demo and reinstallation of things that aren't the code or that aren't built right in the first place. You know, I can't tell you that the sub basis is adequate, you know? And then and then and then we got balancing the site. I mean, we may need to import or export, who knows, you know? Who knows how that finishes out? It should have been graded to begin with as one as one project, right? And it all balances, we're doing it a lot of the time, it's not full balance. And then and then and then you think about the risks, right? So so that is that that gets us to a hundred and sixty, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars per lot with with the three numbers we have. Right? And and so I listed all those question marks. We I have no idea where this thing ends up, but it's it's way more than a hundred and seventy thousand bucks per lot to get our money back now. And then you still got the 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 to quantify the loss to sale, right? So there's going to be a loss to market because we're going to have to subsidize it. And I don't know what that is. And I don't want the duration to hold this, we can't, you know, there's going to be some real construction interest while we while we hold that. And you got construction risk, you've got construction interest. You've got the risk that's undefined today with substandard construction. I I can't tell you what's there or not there. And then and then you've got a forty foot change in topography, which just complicates everything. So I I just for for two and a half million dollars, we could buy a lot of property somewhere other than 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 Commerce Park and and do a lot better. I would think that that's just, you know. And then and then one of the things that we've talked about, you know, so so I mean, it is is making sure that we realize return on investment. And and Commerce Park, I don't know how you do that Commerce Park. But it seems to be lots of people who are awfully excited about or interested in doing it. But I don't know that anybody really sits down and saying, what does it actually mean, you know? And so I worry that this is just another decision that's made without good information. We seem to have a history of doing it. And we have an opportunity by working together to fix that and not have lessons learned that don't need to be lessoned. Mr. Chairman. The Mr. Kelly, you actually segwayed in my thoughts in your previous thing. Um, we had some really great presenters over the last few months. That lady from Gloucester, she was great, who brought in almost a lot of the businesses up the seventeen corridor. And she said water and sewer, you know, a few years ago, we thought internet was going to bring everyone. It's more than internet, water and sewer. But, you know, bringing in the industrial light manufacturing, we got Route thirty, we got three sixty. Where could we put the money or get grants for that? See, we we don't feel like we've maybe seen one thing over the last twelve months of a company throwing something out. So I don't know, maybe if they call into the planning office. So we don't see or hear of the companies come to us. And I know we're not going out knocking on doors. Is is it water, sewer, internet, all three? Do that in road frontage? And now we have industrial warehousing, all of these. Because I know as of today, we just have a very small stretch of three sixty. That's even able to do that. And by bringing in a light industrial, some small manufacturing, you know, they get lunch here, it can bring for a hotel. And a lot of those manufacturers kind of pair off with each other and they just keep snowballing. So I guess to bring it back to centers, what are the what are the boxes we have to check along Route three sixty to bring, you know, more than commercial, just industrial? Is it water, sewer, internet?
Well, that's that's a a multi answer question, but I'll give you my opinion. And most people have heard me say this before. If you use Central Garage as your nucleus for water and sewer, the best bank for your buck is from Central Garage to Ailid. It's the most available land for development. If you go towards King's Dominion, you've got the Ball Field, McCauley Park, all the way to Venter Road is filled up. If you go thirty this way, the land spilled up, it's not really anything available there. And from Central Garage back towards Mechanicsville, Southern State, Sharon Road, Marl Hill, then you got this for a mile and then you get to Manheim. So if if you were going to spend that money, and I'm just answering your question, and you were to run water and sewer down three sixty to the Ailid area, which from Central Garage to Ailid is downhill, that's the most usable level flat ground foot to foot or mile to mile, however you want to look at it. So, yes, if we're going to if we're going to attract any type of businesses, major businesses, we're going to they're going to need water and sewer. Um, and I think even over the Kitty Letter Plan, you have water, sewer and natural gas, which is huge for industry. The natural gas pretty much stops at the Kitty Letter Plan, that that does not continue to Central Garage. But I think out of the three components, the water and sewer are other other two they most need. So the the tricky side of that is the proposed subdivision on the Simons property. They came in, it's 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 there. So I I think it's hard to to stop at a whole lot at this point. But the conversation has been had. Five hundred houses, six hundred houses with twelve thousand dollar water and sewer connection fees generate seven and a half, eight million dollars. Do we want to try to tap into that or do we want to turn that over to HRSD? HRSD, and anyone can correct me here if I'm wrong, HRSD has built their lines from the plant by you two miles out. And everything else is run on the county's dime or the developer's dime. So I believe that the developer would put in all the infrastructure in that subdivision and HRSD would get all the connection fees, is that correct?
Both the county and HRSD have connection fees on
The county has water.
No, but county actually takes connection fee with HRSD as well, or I'm sorry, on sewer as well as HRSD.
And and what, how much is that?
Twelve, I think.
Twelve thousand dollars between the two?
Yes, I got the charge, twelve one, that's right, twelve five eighths meter.
And what's the split between the county and HRSD?
Forty one hundred for the water and eight thousand for civil. That's for the county, then HRSD collect another like nine or twelve on top of that for their HRSD connection fee.
So we would really connect, could could collect as much as twenty thousand dollars if we were doing it all ourselves?
Right.
So then that would take that on up to about twelve million dollars. To gravity feed from Simons property property down three sixty because it's downhill, we would gravity feed. And we would be running water and sewer at the same time down three sixty to Ailid, which would make those sites down there now give you guys something to so to have to market.
Here here's here's and and I'm say it, right? So we're having trouble running ourselves. I worry about talking about running something else. And and so I wonder if the opportunity isn't just to retrade re- retrade them and and make a spread, you know, it just just go retrade, you know, we we want more money. And and at least that way you don't have to worry about running something else while we're trying to figure out how to
I'm not quite following you, you said go after who for more money?
The Hampton Roads, yeah.
So we say you're collecting twelve, we're collecting eight. We want we want to flip the tables, we want it like twelve and you collect eight.
We want more, that's exactly. That seems to me like like a good question to ask where you go starting.
Wait, one thing we have to look at as well is as we try to grow this, you know, this business industrial sector, what are limitations? And to to put it bluntly, HRSD is a limitation for us. They've already established that there's capacities that could be reached in the next few years. Yeah, we we have to weigh that as well in our decisions on what we, yes, I agree, it would be an extra item to run as a county. But would it be something that would be well worth the investment?
So maybe this is an aspiration, I just, you know.
Well, let's let's be realistic then. If 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 we do not do this and HRSD continues to collect the money, we still get this six hundred lot subdivision. Where are we at now? Because that's reality right now.
Yeah, yeah. So I guess one question would be, why why are we running water and sewer? Is it for residential or is it for commercial?
Well, the the residential neighborhood we're speaking of, they would have to run the water and sewer within the neighborhood on their dime. And and again, this this is over my head, but we may could strike an agreement with them where they partially help us get it to Ailid or we pick it up in the middle of the median strip and we run it to Ailid.
And and with the goal of creating business?
With the goal is if we decide here as these two respective groups, that's what we want in the county in lieu of a lot more rooftops, then we create land that's large acreage parcels and it's only four or five in between Central Garage and Ailid. But, you know, some of them are three or four hundred acres, they're big parcels. If we wanted an industrial park or if we wanted, you know, something large scale like the Whole Foods or some, just to use an example, we've got the ground to put it on. And we've got the water and sewer to support them. And again, I'm I want to be perfectly clear, I'm just saying, I'm I'm stating the facts, not saying that's that's what I want. That's what I think the direction we should go. I'm just saying that the the conundrum we're in right now. And and I will I will throw it out there for for discussion. We design our zoning ordinance ahead of our comp plan. That's backwards. I think everybody would agree with that. Typically, you design a comp plan and then you tailor make your planning and zoning ordinance to that. But that's ward under the bridge, we've already done that. So now we have to deal with what we have. In going through the planning and zoning ordinances, there was a lot of focus on the rural areas. The rural areas, over the last ten years, on average, about thirty to thirty five houses were being built. Lot of houses, I won't argue that with anybody. But when you talk about H H Hunt dropping a hundred and fifty on us or these other guys dropping five to six hundred on us over the last ten years prior to Over the last ten years prior to HH Hunt or this potential development or the, one of the other three guys. The school numbers actually declined by about two hundred students. I agree with everybody here, when all of the HH Hunt comes online and the NK Homes and the RCI and so forth and so on. Plus this additional, the national average, I think is one point nine kids per household. The potential of what that could drop on us and, and that's already here. That's a reality. That's here. So we have to collectively as a group. If we, if we wanna stop the bleeding, then we need to stop the bleeding with the major subdivisions. And go down the commercial road. If we're gonna go down the commercial road to Mr. Holderride, we, we, what do they want? They need water, they need sewer, they need shovel ready, let's go. Cause they're not gonna wait six or eight months.
Mr. Kellam, just to finish that, I think someone had said how do we pay for it? So with our, so there is grants available and I don't know, we start to go down the road. Finding some sort of agricultural producer because there is grants. And I believe, and I, uh, I agree with you with running the sewer and water down to Ailid. Is with those tracts of land, we can get something that USDA will actually pay for the water and sewer. Yeah, so that could be a vehicle to pay for it or help some of the costs. So, so the, the, the part that, when, when you saw me hesitate for a minute, the part that I, 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 um. I didn't quite have clarity on yet was, um. So if, if, if you. If you agree with the highest and best use for virtually everything we're talking about somewhere is residential. Then if you, if you, if you extend water and sewer. You're, you're putting more pressure on residential. Unless there's a plan to, to, to either offset that with commercial. Or to completely flip the equation and try to just advance commercial.
But you're, you're talking about two different things. When you say it, say a highest and best use analysis. You're comparing residential to the things residential needs, the goods, services, the grocery store, the drugstore, so forth and so on. That's different than if we're going to try to attract the Whole Foods, the Legos, the industry. That, that's two different things.
We're talking about. Doing away with some of the residential development and everybody knows the partial development. But the whole argument here has been, or is that commercial development? We would hope that we can capture. Some of the big industries of Hanover, but. We're competing, right? We're not going.
Say, we cannot compete.
So here's, it's, so Kyle, are you still, you're still with us?
Yes, I am.
So it, this, um, you've seen, uh, what, what I just distributed, this, this, the, the, the three reference points, right? I sent it to you this morning. And, um. This Commerce Park shows that we need, we, we need to get a hundred and seventy thousand with the three numbers that we have, right? So it's something worth of that. My question to you is what is, how does that look from like a market of, a market, I mean, what's a market telling us? Is that, is that a realistic price?
So eh, the hundred and seventy thousand for two acres, which obviously then becomes eighty-five thousand dollars breaker on a break even. That is not market price. We did, we pulled some numbers and in Hanover right now. The average industrial parcels are going for about forty-two thousand dollars an acre, about half of that. And the reality is we're not gonna get more than Hanover for the points that, uh, folks have made earlier this evening, which is. Things like interstate access, which, which does create value for those properties now. You know, to be fair, could there be a user that's willing to spend that much? Sure. Is it, is it likely? No. If I can go buy land right along ninety-five or two ninety-five for forty thousand or forty-two thousand an acre, why am I gonna spend twice that? To be off the interstate?
When I say highest and best use, if you wanna make, you're not looking to develop it as commercial. You're looking to develop it as residential. At, at least with the, with the areas that we're talking about, there are some areas that are pretty low, not the case, but.
I, I think we're all scratching our head though when you say where can you buy commercial land in Hanover for a twenty-two thousand dollar acre?
Not, not commercial, industrial. Industrial parcels.
Where?
Uh, I'll have to, I, we pulled a list of them. I'll have to get it for you. I do not have it handy to me right now.
And I feel like I'm trying to catch up at least in some respects. I kept going kind of behind the conversation. So I think I appreciate Mr. Mead's point about we, we, if what we want to do. Is acquire parcels or parcel, whether it's industrial parcel. We want to invest in water sewer, perhaps natural gas to try to attract industrial uses. I see obviously that that would. Create additional demand for those same parcels for residential uses, given that it's a. More lucrative. Proposition to develop residentially rather than industrial. Even if what we want is an industrial parcel. So it, my, the question in my head is what do we need to do to prevent that kind of residential development? If what we're trying to achieve is industrial. Industrial development is, is the answer to that a change to the zone? As it exists today? And maybe that's a Kyle question. I think you mentioned that if what we wanted to pursue was, uh. Economic growth that would reduce taxes on households. And we would need to pursue land exchanges. And so I guess what I'm trying to get maybe a little bit smarter on is what are the specific things that we would need to do to control? Um, and I think like Mead said, make, make the decision that we're not gonna, we're, we're gonna hold the line. Right? So what, what are the things that we would need to do? How would we do it? And it sounds to me like everybody's, no one's objecting to the fact that we want more industrial uses along that three sixty corridor. Um, so if we're gonna make a significant investment to try to retract that, how do we make sure that that's worth cost?
So I, I mean, if you're asking me the question, I think that the least expensive way is through zoning, right? If you set in the policy saying the only thing you're allowed to build here is industrial or warehouse. That's the easiest thing to do and it's the least costly. You know, to Mead's point that he's been making, or at least what I understand is then the concern is, well. What happens when the property owner comes in and says, well, I don't wanna do industrial, I wanna do residential. And there's a potential that that can happen and then it'll be approved for a rezoning. The more sure way of controlling it is through ownership. Is through, you know, purchasing the property and saying, you know what, we're gonna buy this land. And then we're willing to sell it, obviously, or you know, whether either for profit or for what we paid. Or maybe even we're willing to accept less than that if you're willing to meet certain criteria around job creation. Or around capital investment or around what your wages are for the jobs that you're gonna create. And so you can create policies around that too, which is what you're willing to, uh, uh, dispose of the property for. You know, if resources are a concern, then the, the regulatory approach is, is gonna be your, at least surest bet in the short term. But I have to agree, you know, I agree with Mead from the standpoint of even if this group is resolute about it. You know, without ownership, you are always at risk as the next group come in and the next group comes in, the next group comes in. Because as, as those concepts change, it's easier to change a zoning code. Or, or approve a variance or, or a rezoning or something along those lines.
So the, the, the specifics may not be perfect, right? So we, we, we compare a hundred and seventy thousand to, you know, or eighty thousand dollars an acre. If, if we were to build out Commerce Park, the three numbers we have out of a dozen that we need, right? So directionally, it's correct, you know. E- even if, even if it's the same price, somebody's gonna locate Hanover instead of here, right? We're back to the value proposition. What we're selling is value here. And it doesn't matter whether we're talking about residential or business or, right? We're valued. And, and, and so to, 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 to be value, we, we gotta be that. And, and. At least in this one thing that's been proper, Commerce Park. I, I mean, we're not, we're not that.
Does, does anybody know what Dixon's Automotive paid for their piece of land on the side of three sixty?
I looked at that today, but then I don't think the tax was right. I don't think the information was correct. Just deciding to share that.
When downtown Ailid, Virginia, Claymore Pool has paid two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for two, three acres. So where I went to school, that's about eighty-three and some change an acre. So I, I, I respectfully disagree. He talks about industrial land. He might be buying a hundred acres in the raw. And getting it for forty thousand dollars an acre. He is not buying a one acre ready to build. It's called the principle of diminishing returns. That's why if you pay fifty thousand dollars for an acre in Kennington. That doesn't mean that a five acre lot's gonna bring two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So that's, that's very, very inaccurate. A forty thousand dollar lot in Hanover County that's ready for the industry.
Uh, uh, what were you looking at, Kyle?
Uh, so there's a, um, a data vendor called Lootnet that provides, uh, listings of properties by type of use. And that's what we were looking at. I will say that, um, there are no, I'm looking at it right now, cause I wanted to know exactly what it was. Um, there are no one or two acre lots. Uh, that are available. Let me, let me expand my search here. The beauty of the internet. Whoops, that is not what I wanted to do.
Uh, this, I don't, I don't wanna get too, I mean, I don't wanna. Get caught up in, caught up in the weeds. Uh, uh, what I was proffering was that. Directionally, I, I mean, but I don't know whether, whether it's, it's three million dollars or five million dollars by the time you get all these numbers together on Commerce Park. But it's a lot more than a hundred and eighty.
You, you are talking about Commerce Park and what Mr. Kellam was talking about was possibly going in the complete opposite direction. Going down towards Ailid. So it's kind of leaving Commerce as is and let that be someone else's issue. But for us to look more towards that from Kennington to Ailid. Now, my concern is that for us to get water sewer, natural gas, all that to be there, we're looking. Probably five years plus to be able to get that there. So is it? An investment for the county to spend the money buying possibly a hundred acre parcel that's there? But then having to sit on it until it's a viable site, site ready option? Is that really a good investment of the money? I'd say as well.
My, my answer to that, and I'll, I'll put my businessman hat on. I'd buy a hundred acres, chop five or six lots off the front, recoup my investment. I'd save the eighty acres in the back for when I got a desirable client. And that's how I'd recoup my investment and then that's how I would control the narrative on the other eighty acres. Back to your question, the Lotsy Industrial Park should be valued somewhere between two hundred and fifty and three hundred thousand dollars a piece. Is what they sold for originally. When they were developed, prior to the roads and the sewer and the water and all of that. But you cannot buy a couple acre lot even in King Way. Along the three sixty corridor or anywhere like that. I mean, the, the, the going price is somewhere in that two to three hundred thousand dollar range.
Sir, is there land around you? You've got water sewer and buildings and it's just there apparently.
On the similar side, if we look at what Tiffany was talking about and going at a kind of expansion. How quick will the suicide people pick up to be there? For any expansion or anything? What's your future treatment that depends on? If it's in their service area right now? Cause there are lots that are in the service area that don't actually have infrastructure going through. But I believe. There is a portion of that. Three sixty corridor going from Kennington to Ailid that is in their service area, but I'd have to double check. But how much more time would it take for them to be able to have people plant? Would that be in process if we look at this?
As long as, if it's within, if it's a. Part of planning, if it's hadn't been just dropped out of the sky on, then by contract, they're supposed to provide it in two years. So let's say their plant falls behind, that's what they're supposed to follow.
I would imagine. And once again, going down this, kind of piggybacking off of what Mr. Kellam was saying. An improved commercial or industrial lot. If the county owned it and then improved it, would be a significant return on investment.
So where do we go? Ultimately, we've gotta be able to, to provide direction to Kyle. And I don't know, if, how do, how do we figure this out? I mean, there's, there's, there's a lot of brands out here. And, um. So, you know, we were in town, we didn't say it was a, and he was going for Indy County. So I think it's more impactful with you guys, because he's here supporting the downtown stuff. So if you look at that in a quick term, but. You have that, you know. And water tower was building the other side. That was what we're saying you get into the county. Cause it will take a long time to go that way. This is a short, tough jump and we're there, there's a water tower, be there by the other side right there. So if you're looking at short, short time sets, that will be something we can have ready for the. Lesson you're gonna have.
But my question would be, would it be the right industry? Like, so when those, when we have waters who are down there. And let's say Shell Building goes up, is it gonna turn into just a rental unit that any business will go into? Or are we gonna land a bigger player that's gonna have fifty plus thousand dollar a year jobs? That would be, that, that's my big reserve to Commerce Park. It's. Is the land and the location, everything suitable to bring in the, not a Lego, but something smaller scale?
Well, those lots in there are a couple of three acre lots. So you're limited on the size and, and it, it's, it's, it's very wet in there. So the, the buildings that are in there now have alternative sewer system. So they eat up a quarter to a half acre with an alternative system. In there. Those lots are currently listed for sale in there and are not selling. But a lot of the, the stigma about the roads and not being to VDOT standards and may have to be tore up has played, had a tremendous impact on that. But those lots are currently listed for sale. You go in there's hometown realty signs on both sides of the road. And the lots aren't for sale and the lots aren't selling. So if you spend the money, fix the roads, get water sewer, and I think gas is even a possibility somewhere closer to that. Ron can speak to that in a minute, Mr. Robinson, I'm sorry. Uh, can speak to that in a minute. But then the, the question is, do we turn the tables? Then it, does it become attractive then? Because the roads are fixed, the stigma is off of it, it's water, sewer, it's gas. So then, and I believe it's twelve lots in there.
Somebody told me fifteen.
So that's just a grade somewhere between twelve and fifteen. So then what's the market for twelve to fifteen? What's the build out time? Everybody watches the news. It's not a, not a great time to be speculating. So we put the money in there, we get, we get it ready and, and, and I'm a fan of it. I'm not speaking against it. I'm just being realistic. We put the water, the sewer and hopefully we can get gas in there. We've got twelve to fifteen lots. We've gotta sell, we've gotta build. And then we start generating real estate taxes, hopeless some machinery and tools tax. So it, it generates a little bit of money. If the EDA or the county purchased it. You've got fifteen lots, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a piece minus the cost to build it out, which Mead was alluding to. That's, that's the, the hopeful profit margin over the next two to five years. So that, I mean, that's just the reality. I'm not, again, not speaking for, against one way or the other. I, I almost think we, we need to do it and we need to, to, to fix it and finish it out, cause it's been sitting there a long time, but.
In your opinion, someone will make the investment, say put a million dollars worth of building on it.
And they're yelling, just because we fix it. And, and I'm, I'm all for it, you know, bring the, the business there, we can fill it out. But will someone make the investment building, do you believe? Isn't there somewhat of stipulations?
Well, we, you know, you're going to attract what you have there. You have mechanic shops, you have another mechanic shop, the transmission shop. You have the, the, the childcare place in there, which is kind of odd from industrial park, but it is in there. I mean, you, you're limited to what you're going to attract to that location. And again, that, we need that. We need those couple acre lots. We need the fifty to hundred to two hundred for the big fish if they want to come here. If we're going to go after, you know, the, the ABC board went to Hanover County. They paid eight, Hanover County eight hundred thousand dollars for privilege of building in Hanover County. We did not even have their, their name in the ring for that. They had a pen drop of a thirty mile radius of where they wanted to be. And, and I, people heard me say this before, but it's, you know, if you don't go over and ask the girl to dance, she's not going to dance with you. We, we did not reach out, to my knowledge, we've not reached out to Whole Foods, we've not reached out to Lego. Chesterfield County, you like the agriturism and the ag side of it. I mean, they got a three hundred million dollar deal going. That I don't think we had our name in the hat for that.
So that's a greenhouse, a vertical greenhouse.
Right, so, so. Which would check the egg box that, that, that would make everybody happy.
So if, if, if you look at the top, right, commercial real estate tax, a ten thousand square foot building generates two thousand bucks a year in revenue to the county. So.
A ten thousand square foot building generates the same as a four, five hundred thousand dollar house.
I'm just, I mean, I don't think my math is wrong.
I think that's same value of real estate when you're talking, where, where you go buy a lot, you're talking, that's the lot price right there on West East. Where you go find the two hundred and fifty thousand for the whole building and the lot and everything?
Okay, so, so, okay, I, I pulled this from the. So if, if, if any information is wrong, then this information is wrong. So, uh, it's, it's, I rounded the numbers, but that's, that's where it came from.
I just, I, I own a fifty by one fifty on Route six hundred in Ailish, and I'll pay a lot more than two thousand dollars a year in real estate taxes.
Okay, so, but this is not bad, right? So I mean, I'm, so what I'm saying, I've, I've, I've shared with you where I got the number, right? And so if that's wrong, then, then uh, it, that's okay. I mean, that's good then. It's not, it's not bad. So I mean, maybe it's be five hundred. I mean, so, so maybe it's not two thousand, maybe it's four thousand. So maybe we generate four thousand dollars a year for each of the fifteen lots we sell. Right? But then, then one of the objectives is to, to look at return on investment, right? And that was, you pounded that harder than anybody. What's a return on investment? Sell the lots. Yeah, sell them. What's their return on investment? This is what I'm saying, I mean, just. So I mean, if, 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 if we sell the lots and at a discount, then we're not made any money. If we sell them at a profit, then we've got a return on investment. We need to get to that.
Well, I, i- if I may step in on that, um, Mead, we, going back to the question that was asked is, you know, what types of businesses are we going to get in there? You, you can control what types of businesses based on whether or not you are willing to provide a discount on a lot if they're willing to create a fiscal benefit beyond what a typical user would. So if the user you're looking at and you do the analysis and they're not really going to generate much return, you say, nope, sorry, you have to pay full price. Um, however, if the user comes in and they say, and you do the analysis, you're like, wow, they're going to have really high salaries. Or the capital investment to run that business is going to create a lot of machinery and tools taxes. Then you can look at what the price is for the land, or if it's a type of user that the county really would like to have. Then you can look at the, the price of the land and say, maybe that, maybe the sale of the land is a loss leader that gets us something that we really want or make sure that we have the types of businesses that we're looking for. I, I think, you know, this is one of those conversations that you have a community need to determine what is the, the go, no-go decision on that. Do we have to make a profit on every parcel that we sell? Or are there circumstances in which we're willing to either break even or maybe even give a little money up in exchange for something that we really would like to have? Uh, and for, that could be anything from uh, an employer that creates a lot of jobs to creating high paying jobs to, you know, uh, creating um, unusually normal machinery and tools tax or, or along those lines. Or it's just a type of business that you think is going to attract more businesses to the county. So as a result, you want to have them there and you're willing to, you're willing to make a deal, I guess. I, I guess that's the part of the conversation that you all need to have. But I mean, this has been extremely encouraging to me in terms of direction that we need to go. But that, that's the kind of nuance that you talk about saying, okay, we have company A on the line, here's what the benefits they create are. They want the land for twenty five thousand dollars less than what we paid for it. Are we willing to do it? Yes or no? And you have the metrics in hand to be able to determine whether or not you think that's a good deal.
So, so now, now we're getting somewhere.
We helped build, to make a big investment. Later accounting will come back. Sound like a rosebud. So the same thing with this, you might have to lose a little, but look at the big picture, it's just something that they're going to generate more money, but lose a little.
Well, that, that's, I was going exactly where you're going. So, you know, what is a hundred percent of nothing? Okay, so in other jurisdictions, uh, my, my background was at the city of Richmond Assessor's Office. And one of the things we did was we, we enticed businesses to come in there. We were business friendly, we, we offered them tax relief. At the city, it was fifteen years, ten years. And then on the eleventh year, it started phasing in twenty, forty, sixty, eighty, a hundred, up to fifteen years. We did that on commercial businesses. We also did it on rehab and dilapidated properties to try to get properties back up to where they needed to be. We currently are not a business friendly community. People, and I'm just telling you what I hear, people do not like their B poll tax. People do not like the timeframe it takes to be able to do something here in this county. So we've got to decide as a group, and I'm just giving you the groundwork for this. What, what can we do to make Lego or Whole Foods if, if it's not strictly interstate? What can we do to make ourselves look better than Hanover? Or, or any type of life business? Because right now, back to the dance, we're not very attractive.
I just wanted to give you a little background too, like the, I don't understand it either. You're confused about us, we're confused about you. I don't know, you seem to be pushing this Commerce Park thing a lot. It seems like a lot of times being talked about that. I wanted to give you some background on that too. For what a supervisor, because I'm working on that Commerce Park for Earl Tension. We had the option to buy the whole thing for one hundred thousand dollars five years ago. Have these little ten dollars, and Mr. Hudson gave us some numbers from all the numbers, because we had more dollars than you have. It was a million dollars back then, just because the V I R was up at the standard of that time. Now it's probably five, but the other thing I think about is all those bonds on that property from the original owner are on hold. And remember, not being able to use at all. That's why we couldn't help them into the property, couldn't help build the road back. But county decided, we looked at all the figures, figured out that we could not, even at only a hundred thousand dollars, we couldn't afford to buy it. Like fix it up to the standards in order to sell it at all. So I just wanted to throw that out to y'all. You need to, you're going to have to really think about it. You need to look at all those little things too. I mean, it would be nice if we wanted to do it all along, but I'm thinking that particular property may be like the, Parker said. There's a little too much being put on that property. We need to look like Mr. uh, Kellum said. Other of these properties, getting orders to, like you said, to some properties, but like you said, if we get orders to the properties, then if we don't buy the property, then you know, you count that. Residential people will come in and buy them up. It would be nice, but that's another thing, on board as we realize that we do not have the money to give y'all or to give us to be able to buy a five million dollar property or a three million dollar property or a two million dollar property. So that's going to be bad, because we've got so much stuff coming up, we don't even know where we're going to get the money for now. But those, all the grants and stuff that are going to be coming through the fire and rescue that we've got, a couple of years, we're going to have to pay.
So I, I just wanted to acknowledge, she helped me understand what you were trying to communicate earlier.
Was she smarter than I am?
Well, well, but no, I just, I, and, and the reason I say this is I'm truly not interested in being right. Uh, what, what, if I'm doing this correctly, I'm bringing information that's prompting discussion and we're getting to, to better answers. And so I explained that, 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 um, the example one, two hundred fifty thousand dollars, that came from Dollar General. You know, that, that I pulled off the internet and, and I just, I didn't have enough time to like do it ten times to figure out whether it was right or wrong. So my assertion about Commerce Park and it just, and anyway, it's just, I'm, so, you know, so I, this is, this is, this is wonderful. And, and if, and if I'm, I'm, I'm glad to be wrong about, about the commercial value, it's higher, right? I mean, that's not a bad thing. So I just.
My, my, my beginning of all this, and, and I do not know the answer, but I, I think it's worth looking at. The, the Simmons property that, that sold. And, and what it sold for. And again, the, the county does not have the money or did not have the money to purchase it. But once it's, if it's fully built, what is it going to cost the county per year to maintain that subdivision? And I think if you do the numbers, you know, again, at one point nine kids per household. Even if you get, you know, six hundred, even if you get half of that, if you get a hundred and fifty, two hundred kids. And what were the numbers to send a kid to school, the county share of it?
Two million dollars for two hundred kids.
If you use those numbers in, in three years, we would have paid for the property. And then we would have stopped the bleeding. We won't have those kids to contend with anymore. And then we own a piece of land that we control with a narrative. And again, as you guys, as you get somebody, you're going out and you're beating the streets trying to find somebody. Hey, we've got, what do you need? Need an acre? You need three? You need five? What do you need along three sixty? We can say you're an acre for two fifty, we can say you're two for three fifty, we can say you're five for five hundred. And that's how you chisel away at your initial investment. And, and Mr. Greenwood agreed to all of it, just the money's not there. But the mon, the money's going to have to be there when we start paying for kids.
That's, that was my point and, and your point, Mr. Greenwood. It needs to be explained through the board of citizens like that, where they really understand, you know. In five years' time, you didn't spend ten million dollars sending two hundred kids to school. In five years, ten million dollars. How could we grow this county for ten million dollars right now? A hell of a lot.
But so if, if, if you go back and you look at fifty thousand square feet, or even the, you know, the, 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 the ten thousand square foot, right? If you think about what we've got to do to offset the residential costs, I mean, it's a, there's a lot of work here. And, and, um.
We can offset the residential costs. It's like them, they track the land on three, three sixty corridor, yeah. Like Mr. Kellum said, you know, you, you, that's also say broad, you can divide up and sell it, commercial retail or whatever. Then you've got all the profit that the bank people. I'm all for a fifty-five plus community. That's no cost to the county.
Do the real estate taxes offset that though?
Yes.
If you're getting two thousand dollars a house, will, will you at least make, hopefully break even?
I guess I don't, I, I'm not sure that I understand. So I don't think, I'm not, I won't disagree with the solid sound business sense of acquiring property for, for the purpose of us controlling. I guess what I'm confused about is how do we find it if we don't? I mean, we, I mean.
That's the problem, that's the problem.
Yeah, I mean, this environment, like, are we confident that we could even market this block?
Can, can I?
I don't want to stop conversation.
No, no.
But I'm not concerned maybe because with Kyle still here, I think, when I come back to Kyle, what I'm trying to understand is that where we're trying to get. When we originally asked Kyle to come and help us, we really wanted to know two things, right? What, what has the highest likelihood and probability of succeeding here from, in economic. So then we're not just out there asking any problems. We're asking the girl, you know, say. So I don't think we're there yet. He's given us some ideas, right? And then the next step was to try to identify, okay, given these realities of the market, the geographic context that we live in. What specific parcels and sites that exist within the county would be best suited for these kinds of things that are most likely. Right? And so it seems like we're getting partway to both of those answers. But then we're taking three steps backward and talking about shooting fish in the barrel. And so we're, what I'm maybe interested in trying to figure out how, how to get Kyle to finish his study. So that we can look at the map and all related zoning and land use and future land use. So that we can focus the conversation on what the industry experts are telling us have the most, the highest likelihood. And, and I don't, I, I guess this is a helpful conversation to get us on the same page. I appreciate some of the additional context. But I'm struggling, I guess, at this point, if we get into, let's go buy a hundred acres. I mean, there's a thousand questions you could ask about how does that happen? What was the likelihood of that being successful? We could talk about ROI, we could talk about the million thing, just how do we market this bond? You know, the financial markets are that they are. So I think we're, that, that's, I, I appreciate and understand that we're not competing for Whole Foods. Right? And, and we should be, right? But the whole point of getting Kyle to come in here was to say, focus on this parcel for the Whole Foods. Focus on this parcel or the Legos, right? Because prior to him coming here, all we had was, to my knowledge, something that I can find on twenty different real estate. Right? We don't, just don't have the information. And so to your point about how we start to compete with the Hanovers, with the Newslands, with the Chesterfield, for all these things that we love. We need to get a baseline of information that we've never invested the time and resources and energy to get, right? Back to the, I'm preaching, right? Back to the pharmacy conversation. Every year that I've been on the EDA talk, every year, every year, we have the same conversation with the same pharmacy. And every year they say, no, we're not. So, so, so I, I, I mean, I don't know why we keep asking those questions until our fundamental realities start to change. Get a shift or focus, and you're going to get smarter about this. And I'm just, and it's maybe expressing a level of frustration, but it feels like we're not letting Kyle, you know, do jobs, pay and live. So that we can start to compete for the kind of business that we need to do the things we want to do.
But the, keep going full circle.
Uh, let me just say that Kyle, Kyle, you have a, a, a family issue. You, you, you've got a flight at ten thirty. How much time do we have with you?
Uh, about five minutes.
So is there anything that, that we want Kyle to, to address before he evaporates?
We don't have any means to find out how to get money, because the board was told the EDA has all sorts of financial ways to get money.
There, there, there are grants and all sorts of, so I mean, and, and so, and, and at one point, we, we had, um, that, that there are ways to do it that don't involve issuing bonds, but it limits error choices, right? So right now, the, the Department of Agriculture has, Kenny talked about it, right, has grants, what you're going to do add, right? Um, so, so Kyle, if you've been listening to this dialogue, it, can you give us any, any tips or points? Or is there anything that you can, you can help?
Or is there anything that you can, you can help us think through?
Yes, I, I will, I will say that this conversation has been extremely helpful for us. Going back to the last point that was made is, you know, what types of businesses that we think will be most successful in King William County will help drive a lot of that conversation as you're like, well, should we acquire this parcel or that parcel? Should we do three acre lots or five acre lots or 10 acre lots? You know, diversity is always the key, but I don't think it's wrong to have these conversations simultaneously, right? Because the, we, we as a community have to make a determination of, of what we want to see, the types of companies, the types of businesses, the types of investment, how we want to grow, what we want to be when we grow up, if you will. And so having these kind of interactive conversations where you kind of move between the topic areas is actually very helpful. Because, um, understanding, you know, hopefully with that conversation around the land, for example, and we start talking about, you know, three acre lots or two acre lots gets into, okay, well, that could be, you know, a 20 or a 30,000 square foot user. And, you know, is that appropriate or is that the type of user that is most likely going to want to come to King William County? And frankly, the answer to that, by the way, is yes. Uh, you guys are much more, um, in tune with the small to midsize user than you are the, you know, 250 or 500 or 750,000 acre, uh, square foot user. But it's important to have those conversations and understand, but then it can also drive, it goes back to where I kind of was going a little bit earlier. Which is, well, if we want this kind of business, so Kyle said, you know, the study says, here are the five buckets that we keep, that we think are going to have the greatest success for our community. Do we want to treat these differently? Do we want to start on one? Is there one in particular that we like more than the other? And then how does that help drive that conversation around, well, what type of, what do we need to do to get the land? How do we get one or two or three pad ready sites that can accommodate those types of businesses based on what their land use needs are? And so I don't, I don't think it's wrong to have those conversations together. I mean, it is apparent that, you know, some folks in the room are much more, uh, 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 experienced in this type of stuff. And so they're already kind of talking about some of the stuff that I know is coming out of the backend of my report. Which is a great thing because having that kind of expertise and knowledge as part of your group is going to be an important part as you move forward. So I, I don't think it's, I don't believe we're in a cart before the horse type of situation. I think this is the discussion that needed to get going that can help us drive so that when we come together again next time, I can start laying out some framework recommendations of what we need to do under the different buckets of economic development that then the community can review and react to based on the engagement that you have. Uh, the final thought I will say is, you know, as, as sure as we're going to get through this process, these types of engagements are going to be absolutely critical as you all move forward beyond the studies, whether it's a comp plan or your zoning or an economic development strategy or what have you. Because markets are going to evolve, opportunities are going to evolve. And so you constantly need to be engaging with each other to understand what we're trying to achieve and what we're all driving for. So that the, the, the planning commission, you know, is, is helping to make land use decisions that is consistent with what the EDA is doing, which is consistent with what the board of supervisors want, which is consistent with what the transportation folks say you need to do, which is consistent with your water and sewer capacity. And so this is, this has been a really good and valuable conversation for me to be part of. I believe I do have the information I need to take the next step. And I'm very much looking forward to when we all get together in about a month in November, when we can start having those more, you know, changing it from a data conversation to an execution conversation, which frankly are always more fun anyway. So please keep the conversation going and, and whatever else comes out. I've been taking copious notes. I apologize if you heard me clacking on my keyboard while you guys were all talking. But, uh, hopefully you can, anything else that's discussed between now and, and the time this meeting is over, please me make sure it gets to me so I can include with that as we, um, move from that analytical to execution portion of the study.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, everyone. Have a great day. I apologize. As Meat said, I do have a family issue. I need to go catch a plane that unfortunately arose today. So I apologize that I have to leave a little bit early.
So. Okay. Mr. Chairman. Yeah. So this comes point, we, when it comes to prospecting, going after the Legos, we have proposed to have a paid EDA member, uh, probably about the last four months, someone that potentially sits in the planning office. And, you know, when someone calls on the phone, we can redirect that, you know, they can, they beat our point person for new business. You know, go to these, with the BEDP, these different conferences and, and field wise inquiries. And, uh, because we're almost, you know, when I've been fishing with a lion or many times, you can talk about the dance. I call it five if I'm in one hook with eight. So, and then we also don't have a website with all the listed properties. So if we had that point person, then we also had a website with all the listed, both, uh, wholesale by owner and on the web. Someone looking in California, looking to come to the Richmond market would look at King William. We would hopefully pull up. So those are two things that we can do. You know, the website especially, we've all talked about that and documenting the properties. Secondly, would be having a paid EDA person. And I think that that can naturally bring the business in. So then we at least we're going for it.
Well, to, to, to your point, when I talk to the Hanover Planning Commission, they do have a paid EDA person. And granted, they're much larger than us, but that EDA person actually has three assistants under him. And the, the two planning commission members I talked to, to your point, just said that it's, it's so invaluable because that, that person takes the phone calls. The phone calls go to that person. That person's job is to try to sell. Not wearing a dozen hats at one time. That his, his job is to sell. So when those phone calls come in, they're, they're transferred to him. He takes the phone call, yes, how may I help you? What are you looking for? Yes, we have that. When can you come out? We take a look at it.
We'll pick you up at the Richmond airport.
We'll roll the red carpet out.
Yeah. And is that the one by Kroger you're talking about?
Yes.
They've got the cabinet in there.
Yeah.
You know, it's all about.
I do.
It's got like, um, that dump truck, it's got a little big, you got little trinkets in there. It's neat.
They make their clients feel special.
Yeah.
Um, I, I would like to do one thing because I think we have two people here who probably are more in the thick of it than we are. And then we haven't had heard from our county administrator. Sorry, I'm saying. Have, have anything you've heard here tonight? Do you agree, disagree? Have you seen it in other areas? Do you think we're going totally down the wrong path? Would you redirect us in another direction? Or is it just this conversation, can't figure out which direction we're going in?
You know, I don't, I don't want to repeat what I told the EDA, uh, last meeting because I don't, honestly, I don't think it's settled very well with them. Because I don't think you're giving enough credit to what is being done. You know, you discuss theories and, uh, opportunities and all of this, but when it gets into the groundwork of how things are, are happening, things are happening. I think maybe the problem here is it's just not happening quick enough to where people see it. Kenny, to your point, um, probably a full-time person with eight to 10 hours a day would, would be more valuable than what Steve and I do during the course of the day, but it's almost insulting to say that we're not doing anything. Because we are. We're right on tune with what's happening in Commerce Park. We're right in the middle of the discussion with the Simon property developers. We made the suggestion to the planning commission that they rezone the property along Route 360. We're getting ready for your next EDA meeting to make a, to make a recommendation to do a feasibility study to see if, uh, we should own the utilities either to Alet or Manic or Boat. So it's just a little disturbing and I think I hear it in the tone from Mr. Greenwood because he sits with the other board members. To think that staff and even the board themselves are not engaged to, to the level that you are. And that's not true. That's not true at all. Now, I respect all the numbers that are put out there. I respect all the reports that are being generated. But there are things happening that I think are very, very good for this county. But sometimes it may not go to the pace that pleases people. And the only way to do it quicker is quite frankly is to throw money in it. And we have to be careful with the resources that we have. Because there are a number of things that are outside of economic development that are important to this county. Education, public safety, social services. I can go on and on. But having put that in perspective, the role of this group in my, in my judgment, both of you, planning and EDA, is to look at the county and its opportunities. Limit what you want to do that meets the majority and go after it. Because if you listen to you tonight, you, you've gone in 10 different directions. And it's after nine o'clock. You haven't decided a thing. So my point is there, there are things being done. And it is almost offensive because everybody's called out about all the help that, um, is being assisted yet. Well, this row here is your frontline. And we're doing all the best we can and still trying to run a government day in and day out. And I think you're going to be pleasantly surprised between now and the end of the year, the county. There's going to be some announcements that's going to come and you're going to go, huh? And it didn't have anything to do with any of the discussion that you've been having. It was, it was the one-on-one work that was being done by state.
Gordon, Mr. Kellum, you asked the question.
That's actually, like, that was a perfect answer.
With all due respect, me.
Nobody wants to follow that up.
You guys are, because you know, everything that's happening is because of you guys, Kurt. I'm just, I'm just referencing things that one of us has brought to the table on our side.
Okay. I just don't think that every discussion has to be an economics class. I think it's about relationships and it's about fundamentals. Anybody who makes an investment in economic development, what do you have in mind? Who's gonna, who's gonna make the money? But what are you going to provide with? Jobs? Larger tax base? Greater services that are not in the community right now? And I know when the board of supervisors hired me, they hired me with that in mind to look at the scope of what the county was doing and move it along to the best, to the best that one person can do. Because it's up to the citizens generally as to how you move. And I would send to say that after 10 months, no, we don't have another Nestle's. But you have things that are happening. And they're not happening because of the conversation. They're happening because of things that are, that, that are talking. And that girl down there works as hard as anybody in this whole county to receive information and share and, and, and we follow up on it. And I disagree when it says that we're not open for business. We just may not have all the tools that is open for business in a greater extent. And I just mentioned a few of the things that are before the, the planning commission and the EDA coming up. That if you consider those tools, I think they're going to work for you. I didn't, I mean, I, or I wouldn't have suggested that they be put on the agendas for your discussion. But whenever something is mentioned, we pick it apart to the point where people get frustrated and forget it. I mean, it's almost to the point that nobody could ever come into the county because you can always find a reason why they shouldn't be here. If you get a retail prospect, well, you know, residential suffer. You get a residential prospect, well, we're not getting the right kind of retail, retail. We're not changing at any cause here. We're just breeding frustration. And that's not what, that's not what you want. That's not what, that's not what the citizens want. It may be what the, the executives of the county government are doing, but that's not what the citizens want. They want basic services. They want another soccer field. The person that's 75 years old with, uh, with, with a health condition, they want an ambulance to be able to come in a, in a heartbeat. You know, somebody wants to be protected from a scam that the sheriff's office can help intervene. They don't want this stuff. They don't.
Hey, Bill? I'm telling them.
So, so I, I, but this is not, this is, this is not bad. And, and I, 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 I think that we should all appreciate the candor. And, 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 um, I think in our own way, we were trying to have that same level of candor that you just expressed. And, and there's, and there, there is frustration among all of us. Right? And, 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 and I, I, I think with, with you all in that, in that sometimes the, or sometimes the discussion does move to win or take all. And, and what we were talking about tonight is how we can work together, which is what you're saying. And, and, and I, I can tell you that I do listen to you. And there were two points that, that, that I made tonight, and I owned them as clear as I know how, which is one, that, 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 um, we all, we, we need to work together. You and I've had that discussion and we need to, need to find, find a way to work together. The other thing is that you and I have also had a discussion about people leaving here feeling like they, 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 they just met with a professor, right? Got a college course, right? And so I own both of those things tonight. And so you're, you're not, not her, right?
Well, we repeated it though, Mr. Chairman. We did it again tonight. We did it again tonight. You could say the discussion has been good, and I agree that the discussion probably hasn't been good for those who, who like that level of, uh, of, of, of opportunity to, uh, to be part of. But you didn't move the needle at all as to what direction you're going. And you've been doing this now for months.
Okay. So, uh, uh, and, and I, and I'm, I hope you're hearing me and, 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 and.
Well, I hear you. I just don't know that you're hearing that.
I mean, I, I said that backwards.
In all respect. I mean, I'm just saying. But again, I'm, I'm defending staff here. So my, my comments are really about defending staff and defending the board of supervisors. Because we have met individually with anybody that wants to come up here and talk about everything that we're doing. And many of you take advantage of that. Many of you don't. But I heard tonight, all the things that are going on in a report, when this row is in the field making it happen. And not just in the area of economic development, but doing things that's complementing economic development, like sports tourism. Like the, the winery that was, that was, uh, uh, just alluded to earlier. That's going to happen. The work that went into the farmer's market is basically, wasn't that big, it certainly didn't have any economic impact to, to speak of. But you know what? It created an energy for a couple, three months that, that is, anybody like Sarah and anybody else that's worked on that can be very, very proud of. That's what quality of life is in the community, ladies and gentlemen. It's not high level university master's degree type of conversation. And I don't want you to dumb down, but I want you to be real as to what people understand outside of these walls. The basic person wants a good quality of life and they want service. And you, Jay, you said the drugstore? Okay. They're still going to want a drugstore if you don't give it to them. They're still going to want a drugstore. But what are we saying? Well, we don't know whether we want the drugstore because it might not make money because we don't have houses to do it.
Please forgive me. So on my behalf, to the staff, if anything that I said was interpreted to mean that I somehow devalue any of your contributions, but sincerely apologize. Because that's absolutely not the message that I was trying to say. My, my commentary about the pharmacy is about what, what is an actionable project? That we as the King William County EDA.
uh, can adopt and make something happen. I wholeheartedly and certainly appreciate everything the staff has been doing to keep us in the loop about all of the tremendous things that are happening. And it's actually quite impressive. Where, where I think my disconnection is is that I've been asking this group to consider raising a bomb for ten years, feels like. Right? To, to let's do the things that we have at our disposal to make something happen. And what we've always lacked is A, information, B, a plan, and C, the, the resources and the capacity to do so. It feels like we're making progress, I think, and while maybe the study isn't everyone's cup of tea, I, I think that the information that it's generating will be instructive and helpful in the future. I don't think that that's exclusive of any efforts that staff have, uh, been, been taking and could present to us as long as there's an actionable plan. I loved it, we were having the conversation with the gentleman about the winery class last night. My, my only, you know, frustration was that poor guy was here at ten o'clock at night and we didn't have anything to do for him. I, I, I'd love to raise a vote and say, let's give this guy fifteen thousand dollars today. But we don't have that kind of, we don't have those resources.
You do though.
We do not.
You do.
I don't believe that you, sir.
All you have to do is ask.
Okay.
I've told you that before. And you have a board member sitting here that if you have a good plan, you've got five members of the Board of Supervisors that has the ear of economic development right now. You may never have a window in the county any greater than you have right now. And there has not been one ask in ten months that I've been in, in this midst, not one ask. There's not been an ask for a position. There's not been an ask for any property to where you want to invest, uh, or any money to invest in property. There's not been any ads. And that's what they're waiting on. That's what their responsibility is to react to your requests. And there's not been one ask here except for the farmer's market. And when it was asked for, for the staff and the Board of Supervisors to get behind it, they did it a hundred percent. That's all that I'm saying. You're not asking for anything. All we're doing is talking.
So I, I, I'm, I'm just gonna, gonna jump in here for a second because I, I can tell you that there has been a shift in, in, in dynamics. And there, there were, this, this group was moving in a direction and we're moving ahead. And then as recently as three months ago, we had two new members who came on who completely shook things up. And, and we ended up not, not tapping the brakes, it locked us off. And so when I talk about we need to start working together, it, 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 it goes back to us as a group being able to figure out what we want to do and how we want to do it and work together instead of smashing each other's heads, which is, which we've done too much of. And so when, when, and, and, and what we need to get away from is counting votes to figure out whether it's, it's this meeting or next meeting that I bring this item forward so we can jam it down somebody's throat because we got votes to pass. We need to, we need to move to, to a place where we're all working together and communicating, and it's not a zero-sum game. There's too much of that going on, and that's what I was talking about tonight.
Well, it's not staff's job to engage in that, and we're not going to be, ever be part of that as long as, as long as I'm here. But all I'm saying is I'm a results-oriented individual. And I think most of you are here too that have been in business and you look at the bottom line. And the bottom line is that we've had no result. We've had no result. And if you think you have, you're misleading the public that you serve. Because we've been waiting on recommendations, waiting on suggestions, waiting on the ask. If you want a position, Kenny, I've heard it too much, ask for it. You'd be surprised, you might get it.
Thank you. So, so to offici, so more than just speaking about it, we need to create a description of a budget, a lineup? I'm just asking.
Well, sure. I mean, you know, I think the concept, the concept would be, how much is it going to cost? Ask the Board if they're willing to fund it, and then you could, you can do all that on your own. If you want the employee to report to the E D A, which I, I'm, I'm here and I think that's what you want, that's fine. I have no, uh, uh, pride of authorship in that. I, I don't have to have oversight over every employee that's here.
All right. Well, my apologies that it wasn't done more officially. Yeah.
Yeah, but that's okay. But if that's what, if that's, if that's a burning desire for this group, then hey, pass a resolution tonight after, before you leave that you want a, a full-time employee and let the board, and let the board decide.
Do you think that would be beneficial? That was my question.
Anytime.
That's because I know that two counties you've been at and your success rate there.
Anytime, anytime you have a dedicated person, eight to ten to twelve hours a day, you're always going to have greater success. Yeah, I would, I would, I would endorse that. But at the same time, if that person's going to come with recommendations, as I think this group does, that's sitting on this row now, and we just beat it to death with intellect, then we're not going to get anywhere anyway. You could hire ten people.
Would, would you agree there's things we could do to help facilitate bringing other businesses here?
Without a doubt, without a doubt.
So that's, that's some of the stuff I spoke to.
Yes, sir.
Have you seen that in the other areas?
I have, I have. Well, I mean, you, you've attributed the handover a lot tonight. That's exactly what they did. Exactly what they did. And you learn, you learn from the, from the ones that are doing it the right way.
So if, if, if the E D A asked and had a position, and, and again, you've, you've got to have a higher salesperson. That, that's most important.
That's right.
And, and that person gets out there, then if, and again, I go back to if, because it's, I'm with you, we still know, don't know which direction we're going in. But if it is to attract businesses, that person still has to have a product to sell. And we currently have a very limited product to sell. So this row here has got to decide what areas we're going to designate. That's air-docked and planned to resign, to do whatever it is. We, this row here decides to do, and then we say, guys, you got a full-time person, here it is. We, we, we've gone to the board and asked for some sort of concessions to entice people here. And then it's these guys' jobs to go out and find that person for that piece of land. Is that pretty good?
Could have said it anyway.
So.
Wouldn't it try?
Um. Uh, I just thank you for, for the input and, and it's, it's well, well-received and we'll try to, try to make some chicken salad with it. So, um, so, um, let's see, we, we, we do have an agenda that we need to move through, and it's late. I think we've just talked about number six. We've got a public comment period. Do we have anybody who wants to speak? Doesn't appear so. Um, do we have anybody on the internet? Okay, um, let's see, the next meeting's November ninth. Uh, we need a closed meeting. Do I have a motion to convene a closed meeting?
We don't have a closed session.
Closed session?
No.
Great.
Okay.
Oh gracious Tiffany, I'm sorry.
We're Mr. Wagner too though.
Yeah, yeah. So Tiffany?
Well, I think we all can see, we all need a bit way to be a little bit more cohesive and a way that we're not having strong personalities shut down the ideas or any opportunities. So what we kind of have had over the past couple of months is when something is presented, if somebody is not on the same page, then I feel like there's been some contention. So what I had recommended to Minister Rhodes is that we do kind of like an outline. If you're going to bring something to the table, bring it to us. Answering these questions already knowing kind of what you, what type of business are you talking to us about? What, you know, what's the timeline of day for them to break ground? Just a standard kind of checklist of things so that when we come together, we're all on the same page instead of all of us coming together. And then somebody asking a question that we're not, the person who is presenting is not ready for. And hopefully, you know, give us a guideline for talking to people. So that was, this was just, and some items we typed up that after listening to everybody what the questions and the concerns were, these were the things I just put on paper. So I just brought this as a, would anybody have some other comments, criticisms, things that we thought, or, you know, kind of a format that would make it easier for everybody? Do y'all have?
So there, there were, they're, they're good questions.
Right, but this is for, if we are talking to a business, kind of what information we should find out? And then before we bring it to all of us to learn reviews, if we're all able to have.
If y'all got the same package we do, it's right behind purpose of economic development and planning committee. Item six B. It's the next page, if y'all have it. Okay.
And Tiffany, you're after that. I mean, some of these questions, they all work. And this is what I think that I'm about to personally know, because they would ask some questions. It sounds like you need to how many people the board resides building for. That would be that long.
Right, and that, and if we had a full-time salary person, they could be, you know, kind of present giving us answers, but I just kind of felt like we were all going in many different directions without any of those. So that was my reason for picking this up.
I, I guess the only one questions that aren't on here are about, um, like ongoing taxes, like sales taxes and machine M and T taxes. And that, I kind of was trying to allude to in number seven where I was asking, are there any incentives or things like that that we have to provide to them? So obviously, if we're going to make, give them tax breaks for like a ten-year period, like you were saying with the city enrichment or something like that, that's kind of where I was, was looking to put that. It'd also be interesting, like, along with number five, to kind of have an understanding of like, what's the value of the equipment we're putting in the building?
Right.
Like, what kind of tax base are we expecting to get back?
Absolutely.
If they're coming to the county.
We can definitely kind of add that. I just didn't know how to put that for just a generic.
Right.
Business questionnaire.
I think this is great, and I think it can be useful. I look forward to having something that's actually blocks it.
That's all.
Not closed meeting. Were, were you, were you going to make the presentation?
I can make the presentation quickly. Pardon me for reading. I'm getting all frustrated. Following the September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty E D A meeting, and at the request of Mr. Hashcraft, I suggested that it may be in order to have a discussion of the roles and responsibilities of the E D A and the Planning Commission at the October twelfth joint meeting. As I heard several comments in recent meetings of each of these groups in regards to their roles. Mr. Hashcraft stated that actual agenda items on roles and procedures was requested by Mr. Wagner, and I will defer to him to take the lead. While I have a reasonably good working knowledge of the roles and responsibilities of the Planning Commission, I have little understanding of, of those roles of the, for the E D A. So first, let's look at the purpose of the E D A as defined in section one point two. The purpose of creating the authority is that the authority, that such authority may acquire, own, lease and dispose of properties to begin, that such authority may be able to promote industry and develop trade by inducing manufacturing, industrial government and commercial enterprises to locate and to remain, to locate and or remain in the Commonwealth of the county and further the use of its agricultural products and natural resources. Having little knowledge of what the authority is allowed to do, I turn to Virginia Code, section fifteen-two, chapter forty-nine, Industrial and Revenue Bond Act, section fifteen-two dash four-nine oh, forty-nine oh five, power of authority. This two-page, two-page section of the code enumerates the E D A's powers of authority. This does provide broad power to the E D A. I will not attempt to read this, but I have provided you all a copy of that. Uh, you all may have seen that before, you may have been, been over it, but if you haven't, please read that. That tells what you have the authority to do under the code. Um, as for the, uh, Planning Commission, Article two, purpose stated as follows. The purpose of the King William County Planning Commission is to promote the orderly development of King William County in accord with section fifteen-two, twenty-two, ten. In accomplishing the objectives of fifteen-two, twenty-two hundred, the commission is to serve in the advisory capacity of the board by preparing plans, ordinances, ordinances and other documents to the board and to carry out all activities designated by the board. The commission also shall prepare and recommend a comprehensive plan for the physical development of the territory within the jurisdiction of the county. Uh, as you all know, the Planning Commission, uh, did complete the, uh, updated ordinances, uh, turned out to be about a two-hundred-and-forty-page update. A lot of work went into that. It's not perfect. Some tweaking. And we're in the process of, with the planning staff, we're in the process of tweaking those ordinances as quickly as we can. Uh, we can't do, redo the whole ordinance, we just don't have the staff for that. There's a way in which the Planning Commission can work with the E D A in order to promote development. The Clap, Planning Commission may initiate changes to the zoning district boundaries which are determined to meet the public manifestive convenience, general welfare and good zoning practices. It needs to be stated that spot zoning may not, may not be allowed. So if at that time you all have a project ready to go and it needs a rezoning, the Planning Commission can review that rezoning, make the recommendation to the Board of Supervisors. Anybody have some questions or, um, do you all want to discuss any of those items? I think we're open to do that. Thank you.
All right, so we're adjourned. Motion to adjourn.
That's the chairman. I have a comment that I want to make. If I may. This is the second meeting that we've gone in there too. The last one was three and a half hours. This was two and a half hours. We didn't need either to streamline these meetings or meet earlier. I'm now the oldest one here, but I'm getting so I can't handle two and a half hours, Craig. But seriously, we don't, in my opinion, to have a good productive meeting doesn't need to be more than an hour and a half. So let's, let's, let's try to streamline these meetings.
That's a wonderful suggestion. So, um, okay.
I mean, that's constructive criticism. I like.
I'm fine with that. Motion to adjourn. All in favor?
I.
All opposed?
Seventy-two. Seventy-two?
No, because we didn't.
Yeah, we, we'd like to adjourn as well. So let the commission please properly second it. You're adjourned.
Properly second it, you're adjourned.